This conference will now be recorded.
It is Thursday, August 13th, 2020. It is 6:30 PM. We will call our meeting to order and establish a quorum of council members are present. When I call your name, please let me know if you're here. Councilmember McCabe?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw? Councilmember Crenshaw?
I saw him. He walked away to do something. He will be back. I'm confident.
Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Mikowski?
Here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Eason?
Here.
Thank you.
And there is Councilmember Crenshaw.
Councilmember Crenshaw? All right, are you present?
Present.
Thank you. All right, we have a quorum of council members present. Before we get to the public presentations and input, I would like to ask the city attorney to remind all of us about the rules, the conflict of interest rules.
Okay, Mayor, I wanted to just point out, we have both an ordinance that governs conflict of interest, and it applies to all officers of the city. And the definitions of officers of the city would, of course, include all of the council members, the mayor, and it would also include all of our commissions and boards, so P&amp;Z, Board of Adjustment, and that would include both regular and alternate members. So I want to remind everybody that the conflict of interest prohibits you from participating in a matter that you have a substantial interest in. There is an item on the agenda today that involves a piece of real estate, and if you own real estate in excess of $5,000, you have a substantial interest in real estate. And under both the ordinance and under Chapter 171, the Texas Conflict of Interest Rules, it is my position as city attorney that if you fall within the 200-foot radius, in other words, the city has to send you notice that we are doing something with that property, either rezoning, replating. It's been my position that that constitutes a substantial interest and that you are required to either file an affidavit under the Chapter 171, and that under our ordinance, you're required to abstain from participating. So that would include discussing the matter, frankly, tonight, if it comes up, or at P&amp;Z or any of the other meetings. So I just want to make sure I put that out there for everybody, because I know I mentioned that before when I did the training, but I don't make all of the meetings, so I wasn't sure if I had stressed that enough. And I think Shannon has the affidavit that's required. If she doesn't, I'll make sure I'll get a copy of the affidavit that you need to sign and file.
Okay. Thank you. And then also remind me on the time limit for any of the presentations for, like, public input, our time limit?
The rules under, the city has adopted, and again, the state has allowed for us to set a reasonable rule. In our case, the ordinance allows for three minutes of public comment, and that'd be a total per speaker. In other words, you don't get three minutes on every single item on the agenda. You got to get a total of three minutes, period.
All right. Thank you.
I forgot to mention, I think, I feel duty-bound to mention, on the Chapter 171, please don't violate that. That is a class A misdemeanor to fail to file the affidavit to participate in violation of that provision. If in doubt, you should always contact me ahead of time and give me a chance to look at that and give you some kind of ruling in writing. Don't risk it. It's not worth a criminal charge.
Thank you, sir. All right, on to public presentations and input. I'll ask the city secretary if we've received any requests to present.
Yes, ma'am, we have. The first speaker is Joanne Wilson, and she requested to speak. So, Ms. Wilson, if you can, please speak up so we can make sure we identified you.
Yes, Shannon, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Now, what I thought we had been told before, if you had different topics, you had to submit different forms, and you had, you know, if you submitted three, you had fifteen, or three, three times, three minutes, three times. Is that not right?
No, that's incorrect. Under the ordinance, you have three minutes total.
Okay, and that's okay. I'll talk fast. So tell me when my three minutes start.
Okay, starting now.
Okay. History of Rome. Please put the historical plaque back on the old Rome City Hall and strongly consider renovating, basically using the same footprint. The side that held the chamber meetings can still be used for council meetings and other committee functions. Should the anticipated audience be too large, then the current community center could be utilized. In my opinion, this should have been done instead of spending an enormous amount to put together a office space in leased building, which I understand we spent about $130, $130,000 to renovate, or stuff to renovate that the city has no idea how much city labor was advised. So they renovated a rental location, which is way too small, inadequate parking, and unsell egress and ingress. We then pay subsequent rent to the property owner, and when the lease expires, we have nothing to show for it. Okay, on roads, several citizens have reached out to me in various communities for road help. What can be done now to improve our roads? The proposed budget for next year is $120,000. As you know, that will not give us much. The Public Works Director's report says he is working with contractors for bids on roads for Mount and Prairie Pond and Ellis. What about the rest of Rome? Could we have a comprehensive plan for all roads and a budget that will allow this to happen? Do not strap the citizens with a $4 million bond and additional cost for removing the senior building, which is another historical building, updating the current community center, and providing a facelift for the fire department, which I understand, all total, could be an additional cost of approximately $750,000 to be paid out of city funds and not in the bond package. This money could be used to improve our infrastructure and water study. We are in uncertain times. Now is the time to be frugal, not push a bond. And lastly, Sam, thank you for agreeing with me on a local Facebook page that we need fresh faces in the city. I am for increasing participation from all ages, both in the government and as a community. This is where my heart has always been, with my hometown and our citizens. And I know you indicate I'm old, but with age comes with...
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Your time is up.
I am equal with you, Shannon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ashley Majors, and she requested to speak as well.
Shannon, I'm, since I only get three minutes for all of my topics, and I had four, I'm gonna let, go on to the next, and I'm putting all of mine into one, so if you don't mind.
Okay, I will come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Patricia Mitchell, and she has asked that I read her comments. So let me start my timer, and then I will begin reading her comments. Okay, her first topic is Old City Hall. Michelle Pittman de Credico failed to mention the historical significance when she presented her proposal to sell off Old City Hall to council on July 23rd. The building was the location of Rome's first bank, established in 1904. Last reported seen at City Hall in 2016, prior to the asbestos mold removal, the historical marker has since disappeared. Michelle Pittman de Credico has been Rome's mayor since 2015. After closing this historical building that housed Rome City Hall back in 2016, the mayor of council borrowed money to rebuild the structure, then squandered taxpayers' funds on extensive improvements to a smaller rental instead. At the July 23rd meeting, Credico said the city has no use for the building, citing $400,000 estimate she received five years ago, while Council Sam Eason referred to a $400,000 estimate more than two years ago to rebuild the space. Open records inquiries for those estimates have yielded no responsive documents from City Hall. Eddie Aguilar with Jacob &amp; Martin was the city's engineer at that time. Referring to council minutes of January 12, 2017, Aguilar quoted the cost to rebuild at $100,000, in addition to a new roof at $30,000. Council Sam Eason and Leann Mikowski were present. Michelle Pittman de Credico presided. Combined with the adjacent old council chambers, the building would provide ample space for personnel and those conducting city business, with plenty of room to grow, at a fraction of the cost to build a grand $4 million-plus municipal complex. Second topic was renaming Old Town. Leadership in many other communities promote their Old Town areas as a means to attract new business, growth, and economic development. There is no compelling reason to rename the Old Town neighborhood Downtown District. Old Town residents, homeowners, are quite fond of this distinction. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Her last topic is municipal complex. You have paid out hundreds of thousands of taxpayer funds to Kimley-Horn engineers for reports, plans, and recommendations. Presenting their CIP plan last fall, they identified the city's top two priorities. First, replacement of the city's clay pipes, and second, rehabilitation of the West Side Storage Plant. In 2018, you got a $2.6 million bond to expand the East Side Sewage, third on Kimley-Horn's list. Water, second quarter warning notices. After years of wear, weather, and neglect, many streets in Rome are literally crumbling, but there is no money left in your budget, and recently, the council approved the mayor's... Sorry, I wasn't able to finish. Okay, the next one is Shirley Mize, and she has asked me to read hers as well. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Please address the following questions concerning the proposed 2020-2021 budget. And I'm gonna go down and list the items that she brought up. Under the Department of Administration, contract labor, she wants to know what the increase was. Bank fees, she wants to know what those fees are. City elections, she wants to know why there's an increase. Wages, she wants to know if there's a decrease. She's saying that the 2021, 19 and 2020 budget was line, and the 21, and, I'm sorry, the 2021 has, they've been switched, she believes. Under court, she wants to know why there's an increase in wages. Police, she wants to know why there's an increase in wages. Admin salary, she wants to know an increase. Fires, she wants to know the increase. Police salary, the increase. Water sewer salary increase, overtime increase. Why are these wages, sorry, salary, all different percentages? All departments should fall under the same guidelines across the board. No department is treated unequal in their employment with the city, right? Next item, she was questioning the transfer of the fire department. She's like, can our city alter years between the fire department, $50,000, and the police department, $40,000, on replacement programs? Example, this year is the fire department gets a replacement unit, next budget year, the police department gets a replacement unit. Next question, she had, question on the increase for engineering services under building and development and waste water and sewer. Her statement, between the two departments, building, development, and water sewer, the city is in budget to spend $131,000 on engineering services. Can these two departments not coordinate this engineering service together to save money? Maybe the city should hire their own engineer at this cost. Next two items of question, inspection fees, she's questioning the increase, and she states that there's an increase for the street repair. What happened to the road repair on Alleyway South Dogwood between Logan Street and Russell Street being fixed and maintained? The last direction from this mayor council on this was last year, that Lance Petty was directed to go to the Wise County to see where they could schedule the repair maintaining this highly-used Alley Street. Next item was fire. She was asking the increase for contract labor. This is a volunteer fire department now, and have this, and, I'm sorry, and now the city is paying contract labor to the volunteers to come to the station to do shift work, and the citizens are paying... I'm sorry, I didn't get to finish. The next one to speak is Deborah B. Kraft, and then after that, we'll go back to Ashley Majors. Ms. B. Kraft, are you on the call?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
That's better.
Okay, on the cost of Old City Hall remodel, I would like to address the council on the subject, since I've asked for open records for the bids, estimates, or quotes for remodeling, and I've gotten no responsive documents, and was told it was verbal from engineers. And it has increased from $100,000 to $400,000. Every time it was talked about, the price increased. And if someone told you it would be X number of dollars per square foot, just like building a home that cost included labor. And since our public works guys renovated the public works office, built and renovated the fire department offices, renovated that rental that we shouldn't have ever rented, they could have very well did the labor on that, and that would have cut the cost tremendously, plus at least half the cost of labor. And instead of renting, or instead of paying seven, almost $700,000 to quorum, what we paid them to just take drawings and reports would have covered the cost of renovating City Hall. Even if you turned both sides into one big City Hall, you could have had money left over to do the, where we're presently, or where we were presently holding council meetings at the community center, made that the council chambers and city and court, and you would still have money left over to renovate the fire department without borrowing $4 million. My next topic would be, the cost of everything just seems like it's what the council wants, because they want it shiny and new. It's like keeping up with the Jones Syndrome. It's all a puke, it doesn't have any substance for what's best for the city. And on to the next subject. $4 million bond for the old school renovation? We do not need a Dallas-style municipal complex. We're not, and will never be, a city like Dallas. We don't have the land size. And why are you including a new roof for the school with the $4 million? We just spent all the money to have the roof tested for structural, and then put a new roof on it last year. That's a waste of more tax dollars. Why leave a historical building like the Old City Hall vacant or sell it when we could be using both sides for a large City Hall? It would be ample price. And at least, instead of selling it, use it for something the city can be proud of, either City Hall, community center, Chamber of Commerce, Welcome Center, a museum, or even the police department, because since the vault is still there, they would have an automatic evidence room. Stop bleeding the city dry and racking up millions in debt just to make lipstick for you. I'm putting lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig.
Ma'am, your time is up.
It looks pretty, but things aren't functioning. Use the money to fix our water and our roads and our sewer plants, both of them, especially the West Side.
Ms. B. Kraft, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Majors, are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready. Are you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead and begin.
It's not together like I had it, so I do apologize. So it's just gonna be bullet points. So, council, tonight I'm gonna speak, and I'm very passionate about Old Town Rome, as you all know. So, the history, we need to take pride in our history. Renaming it, we need to look further. And as well as, I was going to read the history of Rome, as well as, I can email you, I will, for the next council, I will give you the history of Old Town, of Rome, so you can read and know about our history as well. And going forward, code compliance. Our code compliance, I asked that you increased his hours. We're not getting enough out of him. As in this week, I asked for a refrigerator to be moved. Our Sean said that he had driven down the street a few times and did not notice it. I asked for only to be moved for a safety reasons for kids playing and not one to be put in, you know, to be closed inside. But then the code compliance officer told the resident that a neighbor had complained, which, you know, is, which was addressed. Citizens' voice, I think we need to hear, I think the council, once again, which is, we have emphasized numerous times, that the council needs to listen to the citizens in not turning us away. Just like last council, last council meeting, I was trying to speak to tell you that you left off the reason why the attorney is at city council meetings. We are hardworking people, there's hardworking people in our community that have spoken up at city council meetings, that have given you input, at the, given you input, and there's, and you do not give an answer on the agenda. You just pass it up. And for me, at the, I am a P&amp;Z member, and I try to tell the citizens that are listening about the Church of Christ, that it's coming up again tonight, what they are building, so everybody would know, because it's not gonna come back up at city council or anything further. But, again, it was passed up. The bond, go through it quickly. Bond, just a couple of points. You don't bankrupt our city. We, it's gonna, let's hope that it is voted no. It is, it is gonna bankrupt us. This bond will put an overexceeding amount of stress on all of our local taxpayers. They are hardworking.
Ma'am, your time is up.
And thank you so much. Look forward to this meeting. Thank you.
That is all of the speakers.
Thank you. All right, we'll go on to our announcements for mayor and council members. At this time, I don't have any announcements. There'll be things mentioned throughout the meeting. Are there any announcements from council members tonight? Councilmember Eason?
Yeah, I was reading through the police report, and I'd like to ask Chief Love to extend my condolences to Officer Pradilla. He seemed to have a very awkward, awkward time one day, so he had a bad day. Please extend my condolences.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? All right, if not, we'll go on to the consent agenda. All items under this section are recommended for approval for the consent agenda. These items are of a routine nature and require only brief deliberation by council. Council reserves the right to remove any item on the consent agenda for further deliberation. We have A, the minutes of the city council regular session dated July 23rd, 2020. B, the minutes of the city council special session dated July 30th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember Eason, is that a motion?
It is.
All right, do I have a second on that motion? Councilmember Crenshaw?
I'm second.
Are you making a second? Thank you. All right, we'll go down the roll call for the vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Mikowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have the monthly staff reports. We have the department's administration, building and development, fire, rescue, municipal court, police, and public works. We have the boards, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes. Are there any reports that need to be pulled and discussed? All right, if not, we'll go on to regular agenda, old business. Agenda item E, update discussion and any necessary action regarding latest developments for COVID-19 and mitigation efforts and actions within the city. So my update is that last Friday, August 10th, the governor's office extended the Open Meetings Act suspensions. The temporary suspension allows, among other things, for telephonic or video conference meetings of governmental bodies that are accessible to the public in an effort to reduce in-person meetings that assemble large groups of people. It is highly likely that the governor will continue to repeatedly extend his declarations. They have no immediate plans to rescind the suspensions, and that's coming from TML, a little insight into some expectations going forward. So our meetings will continue to be virtual for the next 30 days until the next order is extended. This would also include municipal court. We did have one virtual session, but the judge has decided that all municipal court will be virtual until further notice. All right, that's all I have on that agenda item. Agenda item F, discussion regarding proposed fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. This is not an action item, it's a discussion item. So I wanted to go ahead and start addressing some of the questions that have come up. So we have provided answers on some of these questions. I may not hit all of them this evening, but we will have a public hearing later this month, and we'll put the notification out so everyone will know. But I thought it would be prudent to go ahead and answer some of the questions, especially if council members have been having these same questions as well. So first of all, this is the same budget that you approved as a proposed budget on July 30th, 2020. Some of the questions that seem to have been raised are in regards to salaries and the increase and how they're calculated. Salaries are calculated based on the projected ending salary of the current fiscal year. So that is dependent upon performance evaluations that haven't been completed yet, so we project and estimate where it might be. As with the entire budget, we estimate with the best knowledge that we have at the time. So it's an estimate based on the ending base pay of the current year of staff, plus a pool of budgeted funds for increases in 2020 and 2021, but those increases are not automatic because they're in the budget. They're based on cost of living in part, and then on performance, the evaluations that employees have. So, you know, the across-the-board mentality, the city has gotten away from that, because it demotivates employees if their performance is not reflected in their pay. So that's what we base that on, so I wanted to put that out there in case council had a question on that. Let me scroll through a few others. I think some of the other questions just are more clarification in the notes, and I'll update that at a later date, just to make sure I have this thing. One of the questions was in regard to the election, and I want to remind everybody, this is in the admin budget, that we did not hold an election in... that we did not hold an election in May of 2020 because of COVID. The election by, uh, order of, uh, the council and is allowed by the governor due to COVID, uh, and all municipalities in the county that I'm aware of have deferred their elections to November. So we will have a November election, and we will have a May election in the same budget year. So the cost is gonna be twice as much as a typical year when we have one. So I want to make sure people remember that. And another point being brought up, engineering. Um, we have engineering in, in the building and development. We have engineering in water sewer. Um, you have to remember that those numbers added together, there's, there's a big project tied in there, and actually even both of them. Under the building and development, 30,000 is for the finishing of the master, master thoroughfare plan. And then the normal engineering for the year is budgeted to be 35,000. Normal engineering would be site plan review, um, various drainage things that might come up. You know, anything like that would be normal, ongoing engineering cost. And then in the water sewer department, our big project in the water sewer department, which is why it is as high as it is, is because we're doing a water source and a wastewater rate study. Um, and that'll be 37,000 of that for that project. Now, think forward to the next year, we'll be done with those two projects, so we won't have that cost next year. So unless council tasks us with another project, then we'll have normal engineering cost the next year. Um, so I want to make sure that's understood. Let me see. I think that was all. Um, and also, one of the questions was bank fees. Uh, I, I think that was pretty, pretty obvious, but that's what I do for a living, so forgive me if I did not put enough explanation in there. We have, I believe, 17 bank accounts, and so some of those bank accounts have fees associated with them, monthly fees to maintain them. Um, if you don't keep the balance at a certain level, y-you're gonna have fees. Um, and then managing the larger bank accounts encourage bank fees. So that is what the bank be, um, budget line is. So those are my updates on that. Any questions on anything from the council that's in this proposed budget? Anything you think needs more clarification at this point? Okay, not hearing anything, I'm gonna go on to item G, uh, which does go back to the budget, but it's only in reference to the tax rate. So item G is discussion and any necessary action regarding proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. So, we had our, our budget meeting, we approved our proposed budget, and in this proposed budget, I had to back into a tax rate with the certified tax values that were given by the appraisal district. So what we received after that council meeting was, uh, the, the state calculation worksheet where they calculate, um, for adjustments to your property tax value, and then they help you calculate what the, uh, hold on, the no new revenue rate. The no new revenue tax rate and the voter approval tax rate, the de minimis rate, um, and then the adjusted certified taxable property value after they've taken out the 2020 property that's subject to the tax rate freeze. This is the first year that we've seen the tax rate freeze, the results of that, um, which have affected the tax rate and all the calculations. So let me, let me give you the property tax value as far as tax rate freeze. We have 16 million, 648 dollars, uh, 16 million, 648,000 dollars. That is property that people filed the exemption, they qualified for the exemption, and they've frozen the tax rate on their house at the time they froze it. Now, when you do your property tax value, your certified value is 100% of everything, but the tax office will subtract that, and what's left is what you have available to calculate your tax rate against. So we have, uh, a no new revenue tax rate of .498422 per hundred dollar of taxable property value after the exemptions. Our 2020 voter approval tax rate is .494146 per hundred dollar taxable property value after exemptions. And the 2020 de minimis rate is 1.002146 per hundred dollars of taxable property value after exemptions. So what does all that mean? That is a, a new way to calculate the tax that the state passed last year. Um, so, uh, we see these new, new terminology. Um, the voter approval tax rate, that's basically the rollback rate. Everybody knows it as rollback rate. Um, voter approval tax rate, anything above that will automatically trigger an election. So, what we had to do for our proposed budget, I had put in an estimated tax rate, just to plug that in, so you guys could have an idea where we'd land. Um, but what we need to do now is we need to actually propose the tax rate. And so, based on the number, the property tax for M and O and for an INS, the dollar amount that's in our proposed budget, the tax rate that we should propose is .477694. And what we had in the previous estimate before we accounted for the tax, taxable prop, property tax freeze property, um, was point, hold on. Was .43, hang on. So what, the number that we should propose is a little bit higher than that number, and it's due to the tax freeze. Um, I, we did provide you with a copy of the tax rates for the last 27 years, from 1993 up to the current year, um, to see the history of how the tax rate has gone. Um, the, so what we've seen is, at our highest point, we, in 2001, were at .6385. And then we went down a little bit, we were at .636. For a couple of years, we went down in 2004 to .58. 2009, we were .56. 2010, we went up a little bit, .5622. We remained there for two years, then we went back up in 2012 to .5833. We were there for four years. And after 2015, the tax rate has steadily gone down. 2016, 2017 was .5234. 2018 was .476325. 2019 was .444139. And so our voter approval rate, if we wanted to use the highest rate we could without triggering, triggering an election, is .494146. We were proposing a number that's lower that, lower than that to you tonight to consider as our proposed tax rate. So that's, that's a lot of, a lot of numbers that I'm throwing out to you. So, does anybody have any questions? Council member Eason?
Let's start off with, wow, you threw out a bunch of numbers. Um, so, go, you'll go back to that previous chart. Looking at that, so you're saying the past four years, we've had the lowest tax rate in 20 years? Or better than 20 years, 25 years, right?
Yes, uh, 2016 and beyond is lower than any year back to 1993, 2016 and, or 2019.
Okay. Now, you're proposing a, a tax rate of 0.494146, is that correct?
No, that is the voter approval rate. That's the old rollback rate, which is the amount that can trigger an election. We can go up to that, but we can't go any more than that without triggering the election. We're proposing something a little bit less, .477694, because it equates to the same dollars that are already included in the budget right now.
Okay. So it is a tax increase, but it's still less than what we had back in 2017, right?
Correct.
And it's just a hair more than what we had in 2018.
Correct.
Okay.
So.
And the reason we're having to go up on it is because of House Bill 3, and they changed the way we calculate the taxes, right?
No, no, they changed the way we calculate the tax, but the reason we're going up is because we have to factor in the 16 million of taxable property that people filed an exemption for 65 and older and/or disabled. So that is the reason why we're having to propose a higher rate, is to account for tho, that property froze at the tax rate when they filed. And so theirs will never be higher than whatever that rate was at the time they filed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Have I confused anyone? Okay, um, going on, um, there's also a slide that shows a comparison of other cities, some in Wise County, some in the area. Um, so if you'll look, um, Rome is going to be, in this list, gonna be the fourth from the bottom. Now, this is not all in our county. Um, so Blue Mound is .74, Runaway Bay is .66, Justin is .65, Azalea's .65, Decatur is .64, Bridgeport .62, Chico .6, Alboard .6, Newark .58, Boyd .55, Saginaw .46, Lake Wars .45, Rome is proposing .44, Bronoak is .37, New Fairview is .3, and Hasslet is .29. So to put that in perspective, surrounding areas where we fall, our rate, um, the proposed rate is even low compared to other cities and surrounding areas.
Now, the last time I looked at the, all the tax rates in Wise County, there were only two cities in Wise County that had a lower tax rate than Rome. They were New Fairview and Aurora.
Correct.
And neither of those cities have a fire department or a police department.
Correct, they, they both rely on volunteer fire departments and the county for police service.
Okay. Seems simple to me.
All right, so I, I would be remiss if I didn't disclose additional information for you to think about. Um, if we decided not to use the .477694, which equals what we have in this budget, um, to use the voter, the voter approval rate, that would net another 24 and a half thousand dollars in tax revenue. I know people are complaining about roads, and we put 120 into the road budget that we proposed, but if you wanted to consider doing the 4.9 or the .494146 voter approval rate, then that would give us almost 25,000 more to put in the road budget, which would give us 150,000 to use for roads this year. Food for thought, um, you know, I, I'm gauging where you guys want to go with this. Um, you know, but I want to make sure I gave you some real numbers on what would happen if the tax rate was even the voter approval rate.
I think maybe we should go with the voter approval rate, because I mean, we're getting a lot of feedback saying that we need to pay attention to our roads, and, uh, I know, you know, 150,000 isn't going to go too far. You know, and, you know, 175,000, maybe just go just a little bit further.
Well, yeah, we would be, I, we're at 120 in our proposed budget, so we'd be at 145. We still have almost, yeah, we have almost 50,000 left this year that's going to be spent before the end of this budget year. Um, so we are, you know, addressing some issues in the roads, and, you know, having more money available allows our public works director to address more of those in the upcoming year. Um, so I, I'm not proposing one or the other, I'm giving you the two options. Um, but, uh, what we do, we do need to propose a rate for the tax office, um, this evening.
Now, uh, my opinion, I think we should stick with the .49 rate.
Um, I know people are complaining that a lot of the roads aren't being fixed. Um, but I know, so, we're also going through a pandemic, and a lot of people are kind of strapped as a dick with paychecks. I know a lot of people are struggling to pay bills right now. And I don't know if we want to raise the taxes too much higher than what we already have to. I think, maybe at least for the year, we want to write it out where we are, um, at the proposed, that you already have there, um, and kind of stick with it. I know a lot of people are struggling right now.
Yeah, you're, you're correct, and so that, that's why I wanted to put that out there for you, and let you know, .477694 would be sufficient for the proposed budget that you already have. Um, so you would not have to go to 4.9 unless you wanted to allocate that for a specific project such as roads. Any other thoughts from council?
I keep.
Yes, sir.
I keep thinking back to something Kenny said, uh, oh, probably over a year ago. Um, we're growing, we're going to have a larger tax base in the future, and we need to try to remain frugal. And especially, as Josh said, people, you know, are hurting right now. Um, I, I think I'd like, I think I'd prefer to stay with the tax rate that you proposed, mayor, not the point, not the, uh, voter tax, the 4.9, the 4.7, .477.
Okay.
Uh, one of the things you need to consider, though, in, you know, getting these roads fixed, is it affects our property values. You know, people come into the neighborhoods and they see roads and the condition they are, especially here in Ellis Homestead, you know, uh, property values are not gonna go, and houses aren't gonna sell for what they really should be selling for. Uh, they're gonna, you know, the city doesn't have enough money to fix its roads and that. I know, we have a lot of roadway to do, uh, and as it keeps going, you know, the pile seems to get a little bit bigger year by year. So I know, uh, so, I mean, I, I drive around the city, uh, at least once a week to kind of see what's going on, and, uh, that's, that's my opinion.
Okay, and, and just to remind everybody, what, what you've included in your proposed budget is, um, 20,000 more than what we included in last, in the current year's proposed budget. So we've gone up already, um, but, you know, uh, the increase of 25,000 would definitely go for, uh, you know, there, we would find things for that, but like the other council member said, yes, we're, people are, some people are having really tough times right now, and to ask them to foot that right now, um, maybe they will be understanding on some of the roads that we're, we're trying to choose between a higher tax rate and more money for roads. Um, and we, we, you know, are having to figure out what, what the answer is. It's, it's not easy to be in a council member's seat, um, and have to make choices between two things that, um, you, you know, they seem like both, both need to happen, but you can't have both of those. Council member Crenshaw?
Yes, I'm for, for the proposed rate. You stole my thunder. We had already a, added an increase for that, and the money's gonna come with the growth. So, I say we, I, we go with the proposed, proposed rate that gives us a balanced budget for this year.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Priest, did you have anything you wanted to weigh in on?
Well, I, I think that we're kind of caught in a dilemma, uh, in that we looked at, the, the trend showed us that, uh, before COVID. We looked at, the, the trend showed us that, uh, before COVID. And before growth, we continued to reduce the rate. And thereby we, there was a certain, uh, neglect, if you will. With the infrastructure and other things. And so that, you know how that goes. When something begins to deteriorate. It doesn't stay steady. It just keeps deteriorating. It just keeps getting worse and usually expands. And so, um, uh, I, I feel, um, you know, the need to be sure we generate enough. Uh, funding and a focus on the infrastructure. It has to be a priority. Uh, it can't be, uh, pushed back, in my opinion, any farther. Um, and so I, I, I think it's a, and it's something that we need to be aggressive about. However. There is the issue of COVID. We can't deny it. It's there. It's in front of us. We're all trying to deal with it on many, many levels. It has impeded progress of progress itself. And, um, so it's, it's, it's a dilemma. And so I have to concur with Kenny and, and Sam. That whereas I'd like to be able to generate more revenue and to address these important issues within our, within our town and our community. I, I just feel like the timing on it and the situation of it is that we just have to stay.
Okay. All right, so, um, the proposed tax rate. That meets the budget that you have proposed is point four, seven, seven, six, nine, four, for a hundred dollar valuation of taxable property. If there isn't any more discussion or comments, um, I would entertain a motion to propose that tax rate.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. McCabe and I saw Mayor Proton Priest. Do you want to second it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please.
All right, we'll go for a vote. Uh, we'll start with Councilmember McCabe.
Aye.
All right, Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCowsky?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Four to one. All right, uh, we will go on to our public hearing. It is. Seven twenty-three, we'll open the public hearing. Rome City Council to conduct a public hearing to consider a request for a replat. To combine properties legally described as being legal acres point two, four, one. Lot six through eight, block fifteen subdivision, original town Rome. Acres point four, eight, two, lot nine through fourteen, block fifteen. Subdivision, original town Rome, acres point one, six, one, lot fifteen and sixteen. Block fifteen subdivision, original town Rome, acres point zero, eight. Lot seventeen, block fifteen subdivision, original town Rome. And acres point zero, eight, lot eighteen, block fifteen subdivision, original town Rome. As requested by Rome Church of Christ. The zoning of this property is single family ten. And before we, um, open the public hearing, you, uh, comments, I just want to remind everybody, this is not a zoning discussion. Um, this is only a replat discussion. Those are two separate issues. So tonight, keep your comments in regards to what's on the agenda, which is the replat. All right, uh, City Secretary, did we have any, uh, anyone that indicated they wanted to speak?
We received one, um, reply back from the, um, 200 feet notices that we placed in the mail. It was from Joanne and Billy Wilson. And, um, they checked that they were opposed to the proposed request. Their comment was, I have no problem with a replat. However, what does this do for zoning? If the property does not change the zoning from single family ten, she is, they are okay. Do not agree to a zoning change. That was all that we received.
Okay, um, and, and as I open, this is not a zoning request change. Um, this is a replat. All right, so there were no other that were received. Um, so we will open up the floor to, uh. For anyone else who might want to have input on this particular agenda item. They'll have three minutes for your comment. All right, not hearing anyone. Um, we will close our public hearing at seven twenty-six PM. We'll go into regular agenda, new business. Agenda item I. Discussion and any necessary action regarding a request for a replat to combine properties legally described. As being legal acres point two, four, one. Lot six through eight, block fifteen subdivision, original town Rome. Acres point four, eight, two, lot nine through fourteen, block fifteen subdivision, original town Rome. Acres point one, six, one, lot fifteen and sixteen. Block fifteen subdivision, original town Rome. Acres point zero, eight, lot seventeen, block fifteen subdivision, original town Rome. And acres point zero, eight, lot eighteen, block fifteen subdivision, original town Rome. As requested by Rome Church of Christ. The zoning of this property is single family ten. And I'll open it up to council for, well, actually, let me turn it to the city administrator, um, for any background on this. And what, what P and Z has, uh, that they've taken.
Sure. Well, as you said, this is a replat request only. It's not a zoning request. The Church of Christ is just combining the property they own behind their church. So. City staff, engineer, and attorney have reviewed this. P and Z met earlier this week, held a public hearing. Uh, this past Monday, and they recommended approval.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, council, now it's your turn for any questions, comments, or discussion. Okay, not hearing anything. Do I hear a motion? On this agenda item?
I have a question.
Okay, um, I, I got a motion from Councilmember McCowsky, uh, but Ms. Eason, you do have a question. Go ahead with your question before we go with the motion.
I just wanted to ask our city administrator. Um, does this plat request meet all of our ordinance requirements? And has staff, uh, reviewed everything and it meets everything? It's necessary? So this issue becomes.
Yes.
Then I'll yield to Councilman, Councilperson McCowsky.
All right, uh, Councilmember McCowsky, you were starting on a motion.
Excellent. Okay, um, yes, I make a motion that we, uh, go ahead with the plat, uh, as described in the paragraph I here.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second on that motion? Councilmember Eason? Okay, can you second that motion? All right, let's go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Right, Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Hey, Councilmember McCowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, on to our agenda item J. Discussion and any necessary action regarding awarding of construction contract for the installation of a new equalization basin. And all associated apper, okay, I'm going to struggle with this word. Say it again?
Appartnances.
Okay, there you go. Associated appertnances and site were referred to as Eastside Wastewater Treatment Plan Expansion Project. All right, forgive me for butchering that agenda item. Um, I believe, uh, that we have a recommendation from the city engineer. Um, do you have anything you want to add to this city administrator before we turn it over to the city engineer?
No, I do believe, um, he is, Kyle is on the phone.
Okay. Kyle, are you there?
I am here. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, yep, so we opened bids on the East wastewater treatment plant project and the bids came in. Uh, we were really excited about the prices that they came. Um, and so based off of the bid documents, we're recommending, um. Approval of the city council to enter into a contract with Raymar Construction. Um, at a total bid price plus alt, with alternate of. One million, eight hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. Um, and this estimate was, uh, under our original budget estimate for the project. Um, by almost $200,000. So the bid prices were really good and, and we've worked with Raymar in the past and so. We've checked out their references as well.
Okay, um, so with that being, uh, that savings, then, um, we'll, we'll calculate where we end up. Um, but that was the savings we would hope we would get to be able to come back to council, um, and potentially use that money for fixing some of the clay pipes. Feed into that sewer plant. So, um, that would be wonderful if we have that and council. Um, can consider that in a future date. All, all we need from council is, um. A motion to accept the recommendation of the engineer, or if you want more information, um, let us know now. What questions you may have. On the process. All right, no questions? All right, well, it sounds like, uh. The low bid meets the, uh, requirements from a legal standpoint. So I think. Go ahead, Councilmember McCowsky?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Raymar Construction.
All right. We have a motion to accept the bid for Raymar Construction. Do I have a second on that motion? Councilmember Crenshaw, I think I see your hand on that. Is that correct?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
You might want to clarify the motion to, um, does that include the alternate?
All right, uh, Councilmember McCowsky, were you, um, so there were two components. To the, to the bid.
Which for a total of one point eight.
All right, thank you for clarification. Mr. Crenshaw, were you seconding that motion with that understanding? Okay, thank you. Thank you, city administrator, for clarifying. All right, we will go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw? All right, I think I see a hand, a thumbs up. All right, uh, Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCowsky?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, motion carries. Um, we will proceed as instructed. All right, um, next item on the agenda, item K. Discussion and update regarding water quality and notification letters sent to water customers. Um, at the request of council, the last meeting. Um, we're working on getting more information out, so we put this on the agenda to make sure everyone understood. What the letter meant. There's certain terminology you put in the letter and a lot of people read it and they don't really understand what it means. It just seems frightening to them. Um, but to put it into perspective in regards to the TTHM violation letter that was sent out. Um, with the last water bill. Um, with TCQ, we have quarterly reporting. Um, for different levels that, that we have to report for. And so what TCQ does is they do a running average of the last 12 months or four quarters. So to put the violation letter in perspective. For quarter one and two, we, we did not violate within quarter one and two of 2020. The violation occurred, which made our average bump up, the average for 12 months. Um, that occurred in the third quarter in 2019. So it's come down since the third quarter in 2019. And so, um, the last two quarters. At one location were within. The compliance number and the other location for the last three quarters. Um, which would be the fourth quarter of 2019, all the way through the, you know, June of 2020. Those were within acceptable ranges. So it, it's the requirement of TCQ that derives the violation letter and the average, if anybody spent time in school long enough. Um, if you take, you know, three tests in a semester and those are your only grades, if you. Don't do quite so good on one grade, the other two test scores have to be higher to. Correct your average to what you want it to be. Um, so it's a matter of time. When you do get one quarter with a violation, it can take you three quarters to get that average within the acceptable. 12-month rolling average. I just wanted to remind people of that. That the last quarter, Q two, there were no violations in that particular quarter. Um, then in regards to the other violation letter regarding the radon. So in Q. Four, 2017, so we're talking almost four years ago now. We had one well that we shut down. And when we shut it down, we shut it down the first of November, I believe. So it was only up for one month within the quarter. So we issued a notice at the time, but what the. Violation notice that went out in the water bill this time was a reporting. Um, a report that needed to go out, that didn't go out. In regards to testing, because even though it went offline in that quarter, it was still required to have a test done. It has been offline every quarter since fourth quarter 2017. So we are just closing up the last reporting requirement for this particular violation. There's no new violation. We've had no, no water from this in our system since 2017. So that's the clarification on that item. Um, and as, as far as what our Public Works Director is doing, um, he came on. Uh, in March of this year, so he's identified some things that he's doing to, um, address that. One of the things we did as far as the TTHM violation was to. Clean inside the tanks. And then he's also flushing the, the water more often because aging of water is what causes TTHMs. And so the more you flush that and get that moving and not sitting for too long. That will, that will keep that within compliance. And then as far as the well that's been offline. Um, that's been on the engineer's radar for quite some time to come up with the solution to try to get that back online. Um, once they identify what they need to do with that. But for now, that well is not in production, not feeding into our water system. So in a nutshell, our water is within the limits for the last two quarters, which means 2020. Has been compliant for those quarters. So, um, anyone who's going around telling people that the water, uh, there's violations. The running average, yes, but in the last six months, it's been completely compliant within limits. All right, any questions on that? Mr. Crenshaw?
Yeah, is there any way we can put some sort of an explanation to go with those letters before we scare the devil out of everybody in town thinking they're drinking poison water?
So we had, th- those are template letters that, that TCQ. But we can do some al- alternative communications and Public Works and City Administrator have been working on. Um, something that explains it more in lay terms, kind of what I did. I'm not an expert in it, but in lay terms, that's exactly what the violations mean. So we will work on putting it out in that way, you know, Facebook, we can do, we can do a sheet that goes in the water bill. We just can't do that in lieu of the report required by TCQ. So yes, we will get something out, um, in the next, you know, with the next water bill. We've got a little bit of time to get that out for the next water bill. All right, any other questions, comments? All right. All right. We'll go on to item L, discussion and any necessary action regarding amending ordinance number 2020-01, calling general election to amend election date, early voting dates and times, and authorize the city secretary to make any necessary changes in locations, days, dates and times that may be ordered by the governor or the Wise County Elections Office due to the COVID-19 pandemic. You have a copy of this proposed ordinance and I believe it's been reviewed by legal. Are there any legal issues with this?
No, it's good. I reviewed it.
All right, any questions from council? This is just, we didn't have an election in May, we're gonna move it to November. Some of the early voting has been extended to, I believe it's three weeks now instead of two weeks for early voting, so early voting will start October 13th. With the regular election being on November 3rd. So if there's.
I'm making notes and then we approve it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember McCabe. I see a second, Councilmember Easton, is that a second? All right, thank you, sir. All right, we have a motion in a second for approval. We'll go down the roll. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCoskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're gonna go on to agenda item M. Discussion and any necessary action regarding options for proposed bond for municipal complex renovation project as well as alternative funding and project update. So we've, we being the funding committee have been working hard on identifying options, looking at what we have, what it would cost. We've listened to input from the council, from citizens, and so we've come up with a proposal. And I'm gonna turn it over to the City Administrator to begin the proposal and then we'll finish it with the financial aspect of it after this.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just run through a couple of slides with you. I think it's instructive to, as you guys are planning for the future, to remember where you've been. And as you know, you did a comprehensive development plan about two years ago now. And that was done in conjunction with volunteers, residents coming together over several months. And out of that came this vision for Rome and for the comprehensive development plan, and that's to be a safe, friendly community, proud of its attractive small-town character, and actively seeking to serve people of all ages, backgrounds and economic means with responsive, transparent governance. The City of Rome will offer a wide variety of quality commercial and retail services as well as a variety of inviting parks, trails and community gathering spaces, together making Rome a wonderful place to live, work and play. So again, going, looking back and seeing where we're at, I wanted to bring to your attention all the planning that has been going on. A lot of times, cities will do comprehensive development plans and unfortunately, many times they end up on a shelf and they're not acted upon. And so that is not what has happened in the City of Rome. In a relatively short period of time, you all have implemented several planning documents that are really necessary to lay that foundation to know what you've got to take stock of where you want to go and then how you want to get there. So when you look at several of these documents, you see on the screen, the water master plan, the wastewater master plan, the impact fee study, the adoption of the impact fees, the parks master plan, which of course is underway. You mentioned, someone mentioned thoroughfare plan, and that is actually underway right now. We're gonna be kicking that off. And then looking at preserving and repurposing and revitalizing historical old school for the municipal complex, also looking at the Old City Hall. And all of that really points to economic development. When you look at economic development, we all know what that is. It promotes the creation and retention of primary jobs. A lot has been going on with regards to develop economic development. How does the city promote economic development? And you have to have that quality infrastructure in place. So all of these planning documents are working towards that. There has been a lot of recent activity over the last several months with several council members and increased communication with our business community. And a business focus group is, is on the horizon and some preliminary conversations have been happening with the business community. Of course, we were communicating with the business community during COVID as well. One of the things that was looked at and identified actually as a key project in the comprehensive development plan was the downtown district. And they, the vision of a downtown district promotes economic development, of course. And so it's to develop a downtown core as a unique civic, commercial and retail hub and as a catalyst for new growth and development, emphasizing the character and the pride of the community. So it looked at several strengths that Rome has and a couple of weaknesses. And I think all of these things have been being addressed. As you, I'll go through these slides, you will see. The strengths, of course, are Main Street and the small hometown feel. The opportunities are the historical fabric, the historical buildings we do have, the valuable retail space and the development potential that we have. Some of the weaknesses that were identified will actually be addressed as we work through this plan and as, as the council has been doing. And that's really to bring connectivity to the neighborhoods. You see that in some of the parks' master planning processes. And, you know, there's no community gathering spaces. And so you see some of those things being addressed as we move forward. The land use goals in a downtown district, of course, you're gonna have denser housing. You're gonna have a mix of retail and downtown, a mixed use. Some of the strategies to make that happen in a downtown district are to create that connectivity and that walkability through sidewalks, traffic calming, design standards to add aesthetics and by preserving open spaces. So the economic development goals that kind of tie into that, that were identified again, is to preserve and promote Rome's history. So by developing that mixed-use central community core, that's what you are doing. So how do we do that? By implementing the downtown district and a Main Street improvement program and creating those gathering spaces and enhancing that historical character of the downtown to be able to spur that economic development. The benefits, I think, are pretty self-evident, but they really, not only does it just bring together various components of the comprehensive development plan, as you can see, the economic development that it will promote, the master thoroughfare planning, I mean, when we have rows, as we've discussed, when we have sidewalks, when we have mass, when we have open spaces that are preserved, all of those things contribute to a unique downtown district for Rome, and that includes the historical components and really creating that connectivity and walkability. So I kind of categorize it through anchors, corridors and gathering spaces. When you look at a downtown district, you want to create those anchors. Where are those, where are those anchors within that space? And that potentially, conceptually, these are all conceptual ideas, subject to however you guys want to move forward. But that could include preserving and revitalizing the old school as a municipal complex. Repurposing the old flower mill. Encouraging investment as a restaurant or a mixed-use space. I'm sorry, yes. Mr. Easton, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you. You keep using the word downtown district. One of the things I'd like to stress is that downtown district is intended to identify a small subset of Old Rome. It is not intended to replace the concept of Old Rome. The term Old Rome doesn't go away. Okay? There seems to be a bit of a misconception about that. So as you're discussing this, could you give a a brief definition of what the downtown district is?
Sure. Well, that's what I'm kind of trying to do and I'm gonna refer to a little bit later. Correct, we are not. Yeah, we are not replacing the Old Town Rome. If you look in the ordinance right now, the the downtown district is called the Old Town Rome Overlay District. And it is a wide, wider swath of land of Old Town Rome. In fact, it goes across the railroad tracks. And so the planning and zoning actually for several years has been looking at, in order to promote a downtown district, a smaller subset, not to do away with any history, but really, as I understand it, of course, I've only been here a small time, but really to highlight the benefits of Old Town Downtown District. I think when you can really shrink down the boundary and really focus on that targeted area, that's gonna highlight all of the area, whether it falls inside or outside of that district. It's gonna highlight the historical fabric of the community. It's gonna highlight all the old houses that are here. And it's just in a smaller area. So you're absolutely correct. We're not doing away with Old Town at all. It's just Old Town Rome Overlay District, how it's referred to within our zoning ordinance doesn't roll off the tongue very easily. And so if we're trying to highlight that, that's, that's, that's the idea of a downtown district.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And so I'm just gonna go through these. When you look, again, this is conceptual. But when you look at anchors, here is a picture of the old school. Here is a rendering of the new municipal complex that has been provided to you all. You think of, here is a picture of the old flower mill. The old flower mill is really a resource in Rome. The history that that building possesses and what that means for Rome, we want to put Rome on the map. And what better way to do that than to highlight the history of that old flower mill? And you all that have been here a long time know that that's, as I understand it, where the gold flower brand really originated with. And so I use this picture of the silos down in Waco. I think most people are familiar with Chip and Joanna, but a public-private partnership would be a great addition for the down, the Old Rome Downtown District. And that could be a potential possibility. When you look at the corridors, excuse me, when you look at the corridors, that would include things like streetscapes. You see the pictures here, that's, you know, decorative sidewalks, it's landscaping, it could include bike lanes. The master parks planning has talked about bike lanes. We want to make that area more walkable and more connected. That's one of the ways that we can do that. You look at street lighting, that can add a lot of ambiance. And again, street lighting can be, all of these things can be very expensive, but when you can kind of shrink down that boundary and make it a smaller subset, you can really economically make an area very attractive for tourism, for people to visit. And that's what you see here. And that could include street signs, special street signs that would be denote that area within Old Town. This is a walk, this corridor, walkable and connected. This is a conceptual plan that the parks' master planning effort has created. And you can see where you can have sidewalks throughout. You could have sidewalks that connect Main Street, Second Street down to the municipal or old school building over to the Rome Family Park. You have bike lanes that could be there. So there's a lot of different ways that you could create connectivity within that downtown area. Gathering and open spaces. I mean, there are some open spaces that we've identified. Of course, we've got some great parks, the Rome Family Park, the Veterans Memorial Park is, is a, is a great gem that we have. And just a little bit of lighting can really increase the attractiveness of that area. There are some open spaces within downtown that could be used. Maybe you do food truck parks, maybe you do, you know, pocket parks and shade devices. There's, there's a lot of ideas. And as you know, the parks' master planning is right now doing focus groups and getting feedback from the residents on different items that they would like to see within their parks. When we look to the future now with next steps, so the planning and zoning, they are considering the updating of Old Town Rome Overlay District boundary, shortening the district name to Rome Town District. Again, not doing away with the great history and the great area that we have within Old Town Rome. So it's just really trying to highlight, highlight what we have. Again, they've been talking about that for a couple of years. They took a break to do the comprehensive development plan so they could have that blueprint moving forward. And so now we've been coming back to revisit that. And there's other items within the zoning ordinance that the planning and zoning is looking at. So I mentioned the economic development and the business focus group that's currently underway. There's been several meetings with area businesses so far. And I'd like to thank Mayor and, and Mayor Protem, Ms. Priest for their work in that. And these are just some of the comments and the feedback that we've gotten so far from the business community on how excited they are at, that Rome is really wanting to create this unique area and all the different components of that and what that means for the city and for economic development. So the next steps, you guys, as you well know, and the mayor's gonna go into much more detail, but you're looking at some potential options. You've been looking at revitalizing the old school to the municipal complex. There are other options out there and the mayor's gonna go into more detail with that in, in a Plan A for the renovation of the municipal complex and a Plan B to renovate the Old City Hall and other government facilities. And she'll go over these, you know, pros and cons of each for you all to consider in more detail. You're still muted, Mayor. Were there any questions?
No. Are there any questions? Thank you for putting that together. City Administrator did a fabulous job on that. Thank you so much for all that work. Any questions on that from council? So what the City Administrator captured very, very eloquently was that we've been planning for quite some time. And I know we've been, you know, taking a little heat as a council, as, as the leadership of the city for spending so much money, if you will. But these plans are plans that cities all over the world have. It's what they use to plan for the future. So it's important that we did that. Now that we've done that, we will maintain the plans, use the plans as roadmaps, and then we'll update some of the plans on a periodic basis to see if needs have changed, if our, you know, vision, you know, we need to incorporate new things that we didn't have when these plans were made. But we want to bring the big vision down and make it real for our citizens. And as you were saying, there's been some discussion on the naming convention of, of the Overlay District. And as was indicated, it's not a proposal to do away with Old Town Rome. And I think it's a better name to call it Original Town Rome, not Old Town. It means the same thing, but it's just, you know. name to call it Original Town Rome, not Old Town. Um, it means the same thing, but it's just, you know, a a different perspective when you call it Original Town Rome. I think it lends more to the heritage and the history and the people who have come before us in the beginning. Um, but it the overlay downtown district i- is an overlay. It's going to be smaller than Original Town Rome. So we don't want to exclude people from Original Town Rome. We're not dividing up the baby, if you will. We're trying to create that downtown district feel. And as the maps there presented, there, there's a pathway for walkability and things that make sense for businesses, for the community, for gatherings. And one of the anchors, you know, we we are proposing that the old school building be one of those anchors, you know, like Fort Worth has has a saying, you know, where the West begins, you know, why don't we start with the old school building, revitalize what we have that has all that history? And that's where the downtown district begins. And then you can walk that path that circles around and we'll have, you know, sidewalks and lighting, and you can walk in the day or you can walk in the evening. Um, you can feel comfortable, you know, your children walking um because they can safely get across Main Street. Um, so that's what we're proposing. Um, within that, that path that circles around that loop, um, you loop back the the old City Hall, the old council chambers, you you know, that that was an old thing, that was where the fire station used to have a truck in there. So that's history that we do think it's important. Um, and so we have listened a- as the conversations have unfolded. And so we've incorporated that in our, in our choices and in how we preserve both locations. Um, so I'm going to present to you the two options on presenting um a bond for um the November election. So, uh, so I'll go on to my portion of the presentation. It's going to be numbers. I apologize in advance because it's going to be real boring to most people, but um it it is extremely important um as it it is money and it's taxpayer dollars. So I think we owe it to all of our taxpayers to do our due diligence and go over these numbers. Um, you, uh, we we shared a little bit of information with you, so I'm gonna go off of that. Um, the city of Rome and the southeastern portion of Wise County have experienced significant growth in the past several years and is poised for tremendous growth to continue for many years into the future. As businesses and families move into the area, the effects of this growth have been felt by the city. All city departments have encountered tremendous increase in demand in call volume, walk-in traffic and requests for information as well as services in and around the city. The proposed bond will fund the modernization of the city's police station, administration, municipal court, as well as community, community and training centers that serve the city of Rome's diverse population, including children, seniors and adults, while preserving the historic qualities and small-town values associated with the old school building uh in its campus. So the municipal government campus project goals include maintaining continuity of city ser- services, maximizing value and utilizing resources judiciously, optimizing opportunities in consistency with the strategic vision and the comprehensive master plan. So those are our goals in everything that we're proposing tonight. Um, so if you want to follow along um in what you were given, it's going to be page thirty-four. Um, so you can see the details. So this is a summary of two proposed bond propositions. We are not proposing to uh approve or vote on both of these. We're proposing one or the other. So our first option, which I'm gonna call Bond Proposition A, is to renovate the municipal government campus. The estimated time for completion will be October twenty-twenty-one. The municipal campus project funds needed are three, four million, three hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. This would equate to a proposed bond of four point seven five million. And the the difference in that, you'll see, um, when we get to the next page, will be issuance costs and other costs um a- almost uh like a contingency, but but other things that we need to plan for. So some of the pros for renovating the old school building and this campus area, which includes the community center, fire station, public works, um, is that we would have one central location for all the city departments with room for future growth. And it provides convenient one-stop shopping for the citizens. So whether they need to pay their water bill, if there's a meeting, you you know, if they've got to pay a ticket, you know, if we're having court, you know, there there can do just about anything. If they have a question, if they want to issue a complaint, a code violation complaint, or submit a a permit request. They can do all the, one location that has enough room for the staff that need to handle that. A second pro would be the renovated old school auditorium serves as a large multipurpose room for approximately one hundred to one hundred and fifty people for meetings, municipal court, as well as outside rentals by organizations, businesses, or individuals. Another pro for this bond proposition, as the police department moves to the municipal campus, the old police department located on B C Rome, that building would potentially be available for a larger multipurpose community center with overflow parking available at the municipal campus location. So we could hold bigger events and have places for parking. We could put a crosswalk to cross on B C Rome and maybe some lighting um signs that that stop the traffic. Another pro would be the old City Hall and Council Chamber buildings at one oh five West First Street would potentially be available for additional city office space such as Economic Development Corporation or record storage in the future. Um, so in this proposal, we've listened to, we've listened to the council and their struggle in the discussion with considering selling the the um building at one oh five West First Street. So um heard your voice in in your just your, your comments, your, your struggle to, you know, the history of it versus finances. Uh, I'm gonna propose that we renovate the municipal complex campus, but we do not sell that building. We save that for a future project, a future annex building. Um, it'll revitalize the downtown area even more if we consider that in the future. And I think it will make many people very happy um for the city to hold on to that based on the input that we're hearing. Um, the cons of this bond would be the buildings are in need of major renovations. There's no electrical plumbing, A C, y- you know, it major renovations. Um, another con of this proposal would be that the red building, it's eight hundred and eighty square feet with space for twenty-five people, needs to be removed for compliance with parking regulations and to provide enough spacing for the new complex. Um, so those are the pros and cons on that proposition. Uh, any questions on that one at this point? Okay. All right, bomb proposition B. So your second option would be we're not going to renovate the old school building. We choose not to do that. We choose to renovate the old City Hall and the old council chambers instead, as well as multiple government facilities. The estimated time for completion of this project would be twenty-twenty-two. Um, the multiple locations project funds needed would be two million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, this would be a bond proposal for three point three million, but due to bond restrictions, it would require three separate bonds on the ballot to add up to the three point three million. Because what we're going to propose on the second one, if uh if we don't renovate the old school building, then we're to the point, ev- everyone agrees, no matter what side of this you're on, that we do not need to keep spending money on a lease on a building we do not own. We all agree on that. So we don't have to fight about that one. But we have to relocate the staff that are there. They're already maxed out on space, so we've got to relocate them. If we relocate them to the old City Hall, that is actually smaller than, smaller square footage than where we're currently at. So they would need to overflow into the old council chambers. So City Hall would need to occupy both, both buildings, and it would become one to uh account for staff growth, storage, and things that we don't have in our current location. So now that we've proposed to move that, where are we going to hold council meetings? Well, the only space that we have is our current space, and we all know and we all agree that this has to be renovated. It's included as a portion of the other bond proposition. Uh, so this needs to be renovated. It's not ADA compliant. We've got parking driveway issues. Um, you know, asbestos, we've got things that have to be fixed. So that one would be on the table. So now we're looking at not only renovating the two buildings, we're looking at renovating the community center here on on this location. Then we get to the P D. The P D building, the current building is in need of repairs. Uh, it's in need of some structural repairs. The parking is a a problem, the the driveway um not being paved. We need to pave that. The police need a home. They need a renovated home. If they're gonna stay in the building they have, we're gonna have to shell out the money and renovate their home. They deserve better. They put their life on the line for us. We should at least offer them a building that gives them what they need. Um, you know, i- it's time to stop being okay with mediocre, you know, and patching things together. Um, they deserve better than that. So we would need to renovate P D. So there's three buildings now that we're up to in that renovation. Um, and then thirdly, the last thing that we would have, we would have the old school building that's standing, the vacant building. Um, we have ordinances, we have parking issues out here. In order to effectively stay in this community center, we would need to go ahead and remove the red building as we have proposed in the other bond proposition. And then we would need to make a final decision on demoing the old school building. We cannot leave it standing and empty forever. And if we're not going to renovate it, use it, then we need to make that decision. And then we would have some open green space there that um potentially could be, you know, just a a quiet area, green space. Um, and something that looks prettier than boarded windows. Um, I'm not, you know, a a fan of doing multiple locations because part of the challenge will be the musical chairs because we still have to have continuity in city services. So we would have to move one. We could move City Hall when that was done. But where are we going to hold the council meetings if this room is under construction? We we don't have an adequate facility that's comparable that would hold um what we'd need. So th- there would be a a huge challenge. Um, maybe it's an opportunity. Um, but then we would also have an issue with the P D. Can we renovate and stay in that same location? P D have certain things in their building that have to be secured at all times and only authorized. Um, people who've been through the proper background checks can access that. So the question of whether they can be in that building while it's being renovated, knowing there are structural issues that have to be fixed, um, I don't think that that's uh likely, but um I'm not an engineer. Um, that would definitely be a challenge to renovate around them. Um, so those are some of the challenges with that proposition. Um, some of the pros with that proposition of the multiple buildings would be the historic value of renovating the old City Hall and the council chambers. Um, the overall cost is less than the municipal complex campus renovation project. Um, the cons are, as I said, buildings are in need of major repairs. We would have to phase over time the movement of the current operations uh to be able to keep everything going. Um, no facilities currently available to house the police during renovation if they cannot stay in the building they're in while it's being renovated. Um, and then just demolishing the old school building. And if we replace that with green space, um, the challenge is that people will still see green spaces, park space, and we have meetings and emergency traffic here, and that may not be the ideal location to locate a pocket park um without proper barriers um to protect any children that might be there in that open space without adults to watch over them. Um, so those are the two propositions kind of at a high level. I've also given you a couple of pages of the breakdown of the cost individually by building. Um, so uh I can go through these if you'd like and and point out some of the highlights on those. Do we have any questions up to this point? Councilmember Crenshaw?
Yes, um, I think this is a no-brainer. We set out to renovate the old school. That's what we're gonna do. Because yeah, it's gonna be cheaper to renovate the old City Hall and all that other stuff in the short run. But in the long run, we're gonna end up spending double what we're gonna spend just to build the municipal complex out of the old school. So in my humble opinion, I believe that we just stick to our plan that we've already laid down and continue to march.
Okay. Anyone else with comments or thoughts at this point?
I think, you know, we should continue on a plan that we've been working on for several years. You know, we brought this up in multiple times, uh, first, you know, um city residents do put their input into what we're doing here. And this is, seems to be the direction that most of them want, want us to go. Uh, I can't see throwing away the money that we've already invested in this and just going on another path.
Okay. Councilmember McCabe, I think you were wanting to speak.
Uh, yeah, so since we're talking about both locations, I just think it's would be a good time for me to share some information I came across. I kind of cleared the air with everybody. So I know there's been a lot of questions about uh the old City Hall lately. And I have been working with the Wise County Historical Committee as well as um the Texas Historical Commission down in Austin. And um back in nineteen eighty-three, yes, a plaque was issued to the bank uh for a state historical marker. But after talking with the Project Revere that is overall historical architecture in Wise County, um, he is saying that that was a informational plaque only. And in the email that he sent me, um, and I quote, uh, as we discussed over the phone, the building currently does not have any historic designations, regulations, or restrictions. Uh, the former Texas Historical Marker associated with the property was just a subject marker for public education purposes only, end quote. And as he explains to me, that means that um, because of that, there there's no restrictions on renovating or selling or building or anything like that. Um, unless it was deemed a historical landmark, uh, which it is not at this time. Um, so with that said, uh, you know, we can kind of do what we want with it uh now. Uh, but likely, and and everybody else, I think, is in agreement. Um, I think we need to stick with what we've planned. We've already spent a lot of money on the plan that we've got. Um, and if anything, I think all of our, you know, central services need to be located in a central place. If anything, it makes communication easier and faster um for for everybody. So I just wanted to clear the air on the historical landmark issue of that old building. Uh, maybe that may change some minds, maybe it won't, but uh, I'm with everybody else. I think we need to move forward with the plan that we have now.
Thank you for for sharing that. And yes, you are correct. It i- it is a subject marker, so it's an educational informational marker. Um, I I know there's been a lot of speculation, um, you know, social media can be your friend, but it can also be an avenue for a lot of speculation that is unfounded. Um, so uh it is not a historic building, as you said, and you have a confirmation email from the the Historical Commission representative indicating such. Um, and we do have the marker still. Um, some of the speculation was that it's disappeared. Um, no, uh, everything was moved out of that building. It's a vacant building. And so uh, the marker was taken and put in a place to keep it safe until such time as the council decided what to do with that building. Um, it cannot be moved to a different location without express permission of the historical district. So that is why it never went to the new City Hall um or the community center. That is not the appropriate location or the authorized location for it to exist and be displayed. Um, so yes, that that is good. Thank you for for clearing the air on that. Um, two, um, heard some numbers thrown out just to the, for the council's uh peace of mind. Um, you know, uh, a lot of these projects and things have spanned over, you know, four years, almost five years now. It seems like twenty sixteen, we found mold in the one oh five West First Street City Hall building. We had to vacate Thursday afternoon. We got the call at three o'clock. Everybody packed up and over the weekend, we moved over here to the community center and, you know, located in half this room and held meetings in the other half. Um, then we moved over to the fire department training or the fire department offices for a period of time until we moved to the Y building. So it's been musical, musical locations with City Hall and the staff need a permanent home. Um, but uh as far as costs that the city has incurred, um, some of the the comments were that we spent seven hundred thousand dollars on Quorum, which are the architects for the project that we've engaged up to this some of the comments were that we spent $700,000 on Quorum, which are the architects for the project that we've engaged up to this point. The contractual obligation that council has approved is 198,000 in total, not 700,000. So I wanted to correct that information. And then when we moved City Hall from the, where the fire department offices are now, to 501 South Main, the cost to move in was approximately $54,000. I've heard some inflated numbers on that. And then we had to pay another lease on top of that. But if you hear numbers that seem very high, then please check with city staff or myself to get clarification on what the real expenditures were because we track that back to the financial software and the invoices that we have on file and we can provide you with a detailed list of every single invoice for various projects. So if you have any concern on that aspect, please let us know. One of the things too, I want to clarify in what the Quorum group is working on, on the design for the municipal complex right now. There was a statement that we were going to pay for another roof to be done at the old school building. That is incorrect. We've already spent money on the roof. So that is not part of what the design, proposed design costs include. We've already got that. So we're not going to be paying for that twice. So hopefully that clears up some information. So it sounds like everyone's kind of on board with, I haven't heard from Councilmember Ethan. Do you have some comments on the two options that we're presenting to you?
Just repeats of everything that was said. I think Kenny said it best, it's a no brainer. Proposition A. And if, I don't think we've heard from Mrs. Priest yet.
Well, I, you know, I've been, you would know that I'm one of those people that I try to move back away from what I call the buzz. And the buzz is static from people expressing their opinions and some of it is factual and some of it is not. Some of it's incomplete. Some of it is just a perspective situation. And so I pulled back and just thought about, you know, what, what do we have? And every building that the city owns has some historic relationship to Rome. Every building that we have is in disrepair. Some still has asbestos issues. Some are not compliant for accessibility. The police department is multi-layered as far as the flooring and poses a hazard, in my opinion, just walking around there. So no matter what we do, no matter what we decide, and no matter what action anybody favors, it's going to cost a lot of money. And the longer we wait, the more things deteriorate, the more growth that we have in front of us. And we have to have room for that growth that's going to happen. It's going to happen. And within two years, we're going to see not only rooftops, we're going to see all the overflow of impending businesses, commercial. And we, we have to be more prepared. We have to reinforce what we already have. We have to better what we already have. We have to look at the safety issue of what we already have. And so I went back and also thought about the, the long-term plan. That plan didn't just happen. It took every person in the city of Rome that chose to participate through either public hearings, surveys, steering committees, focus groups. The city of Rome's citizens developed that long-range plan. And as long as I've been on the city council since 2018, I have heard nonstop that the infrastructure needs to be addressed. That the original town of Rome needed revitalization. That the original town of Rome needed thoroughfare plan to deal with Main Street, to deal with commerce, to deal with retail. And it's the citizens of Rome that came up with the overall plan that we now at least have a roadmap. Everybody had a vision, but we didn't know how to get ourselves started until we came up with that long-range plan. So we get down to the two choices. I'm in favor of option A. The caveat that the importance of First Street and the two buildings over there as future use, whether we call it a an annex or whether we designate it in such a fashion to look at economic development and our business folks coming out on their own and organizing themselves and working with the city in a partnership arrangement, or whether we look at the old police department as a potential multi-purpose community building that will last for a long time and accommodate many things. My caveat is that we put together some sort of facility management committee that comes up with a plan for every building and every piece of property the city owns. And I know that the ones that don't have buildings have been identified pretty much, especially with parks and wrecks, looking at those possibilities with their efforts. But I'm just saying that we can't ignore the things that we have any longer and let them continue to fall in disrepair, whether it's the infrastructure, whether it's their buildings, whether it's, it's property that we own. We have to bite the bullet. We have to pay and invest in ourselves. Yes, it's going to cost money. But my daddy taught me a long time ago, and he happened to be a banker, that it's our responsibility to do good planning, but also to realize when it's time to invest in yourself for the greater good of your long-range plan. Whether it's on your personal side or whether it's your business side or whether it's on your city side. And so I, that would be what my comment is, I'm in favor of Plan A. But I'm also wanting us to do more. I want us to look at all of our facilities and evaluate them and look at their potential and come up with a plan, five-year plan, a 10-year plan, whatever, so that we utilize those buildings and get the most out of them for the benefit of this, of this town. That's my comment.
All right, thank you. That's a hard one to follow. All right, so we presented two options. We've given you a lot of detail on the different buildings and the cost and where we came up with these projections. And we've included some notes. You know, there's, you may have heard, you know, different variations of stories of the cost for the old City Hall and old council chambers. So I've included some notes there for how that transpired to get that cost estimate. This is just, you know, this isn't a hard estimate. So, you know, if anybody says, show me the detailed paperwork, there's not any. These are estimates based on conversations with our engineers. And in comparison with the cost that we have from our architects for the buildings over on the community center, the ones that we already have in hand. So we're extrapolating that cost over on Proposition B. One of the things that we did for the bond dollar amount where we got the 4.6, 4 million 750 was that we backed out on including any grant funding in, in that as available funding. We feel like the grants or something, we're going to have to have separate people, either grant writers, grant managers, to get these bigger grants that we potentially could, could get and work on those. If we do get a grant, that would be something we could save money on, on the bond. We could pay that bond money back that wasn't spent because we received a grant. But on a conservative note, we as a committee believe that we ought to back out the grants and not include those. Go ahead and bond out for what we think in the event that we don't get those grants. Because with COVID, many of the grants, the programs, there's more people asking for it or there's less money available. So we don't want to promise you that we're going to get a grant. And then we're under a time construing as well. So we backed that out. You have that information. You also have information that was created from our financial advisors at Hilltop Securities on the projections on the amount of our payments, how that will affect our debt rate. And so if you have any questions on that, we can go over that. If not, you can use that for comparison to our debt rate in our current budget. So we'll have one year of overlap where our debt rate would, would go up somewhat. And then it would start coming back down more in line with what we've seen. So we would have at least one year. Because remember, I told you in previous meetings that we're paying off two bonds. And as those payments fall off, this proposed bond for the municipal complex would replace those payments. So it would even out over time once we got those two paid off. And so our magic year to have, the first one paid off is 2024 and the second one is 2025. So 2022, 23, that will be our year of, you know, we're going to have to dig in, you know, some of these projects, the engineering projects that were one-time projects, those will be done. So in theory, you know, if, if we had, you know, $70,000 on engineering projects and we didn't have those next year, then we have, assuming all the, everything stays the same, we would have 70,000 that could be allocated either toward a bond payment or something similar to that in the planning. So that's how we're planning out, how are we going to pay for this? Let me see what else I need to let you know. We reshared with you the conceptual plans. Those, those have been changing, you know, as the meetings have gone on. So those are not necessarily the finalized version, but those are just samples for you to look at. All right, so with the discussion that I'm hearing, it sounds like everybody is, is moving toward Proposition A. Mayor Protem, yes ma'am?
I just want also to reiterate about those numbers that those are projected numbers with 20% built in there for extra unknowns. There's some soft costs in there. And so I'm expecting, and hopefully so, that if the bond passes and we actually let this out for bid, that it won't be that much money. When, like what we saw with the wastewater treatment bid. You know, we, we came in $200,000 under that. And so, you know, it's entirely possible that the bids when they come in will be less than these projected numbers.
Yes.
So I just wanted everybody to think about that.
All right. Any questions on the proposal? I don't know if we need an actual motion on the proposal. I'll look to our legal, legal advisor on that. Does it sound like we need to propose one option or the other?
I think it probably would be wise to get at least a resolution, giving you some direction as to which way the council wants you to go.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Crenshaw?
Yes, I make a motion that we pass a resolution supporting Option A of renovating the old schoolhouse for this municipal complex.
Okay, I have a motion for a resolution on Option A from Mr. Crenshaw. Is there a second on that motion? Councilmember Ethan? Are you seconding that? Yes, sir? All right, so we have a motion, a second for a resolution on Option A. Let's go down the roll. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Crenshaw? Councilmember Crenshaw? I may have lost him, I'll come back to him. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCosky?
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan?
Aye.
All right, and I'll come back to Councilmember Crenshaw. You may have lost the audio on him. Councilmember Crenshaw? We're, we're doing our vote, our record vote. Okay, that's an aye from you, yes, sir. All right, motion carries on a resolution for Option A. All right, so we'll move on to Agenda Item O, Discussion, oh, no, hold on, I skipped one. Agenda Item N, Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding a Resolution Calling a Bond Election to be Held November 3, 2020 and Resolving Other Matters Incident and Related There Too. So now that you've approved an Option A resolution, in order for a bond proposition to be on the November election, the council must pass a resolution before August 17 calling for that bond election. You received a copy of the resolution today. So any questions on that? Councilmember Ethan?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt that resolution for this bond to be on November 3 election.
All right, we have a motion on that.
I'll second that.
And we have a second from Councilmember McCosky. Thank you. Right. So we'll go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Crenshaw? That's a thumbs up from Councilmember Crenshaw. Mayor Protem Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCosky?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Ethan?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd also like to thank Bob Drainsfield and his team. They're a bond counsel that have been on the line as well as John Martin with Hilltop. Thank you all for calling in. We appreciate you being available in case the council had questions.
No problem, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you, sir. All right, Agenda Item O, Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding Amendments to the Rolling V Agreement with PMB Capital. So we wanted to come back to council. There's been a lot of work on the Rolling V project from the staff side, from PMB's side. And so we wanted to bring council up to speed on what's been going on. I know a lot of people have questions. There's lots of speculation out in the community, what's going on, what's happening, when's it going to happen? So tonight, we want to welcome Peter Pincloss with PMB. And he wants to give us a little bit of information. This is not going to be a nuts and bolts discussion, but just kind of a high-level introduction overview of where we're at on the Rolling V project. So Peter, thank you for calling in this evening.
No, I'm happy to. Good evening, mayor and council. It's nice to see all of you this evening, albeit remotely. I'm pleased to be here to give you an update on the Rolling V project. We've been working diligently since closing on the property in September of 2019. In the last several months, we've signed contracts with large reputable home builders to sell in excess of 1,300 lots for the construction of the first 1,300 homes in the community over the course of several phases. Consistent with what we've done in other communities through my business and also consistent with other large master plan communities in North Texas, we're planning an array of lot sizes that we can, that can meet the needs of all prospective buyers that are interested in the community, be it related to the stage of life or a desire for a variety of different price points. After several meetings with city staff to ensure compliance with city processes and procedures, we're planning to submit preliminary plots for those first several. we're planning to submit preliminary plots for those first several phases soon. And so my goal tonight is really just to touch base with you again, to give you an opportunity to ask questions to the extent you have them, and just to let you know that we're genuinely excited to be at this point and looking forward to to making real demonstrable progress on the on the project. We'll be back in front of you regularly to update you on plans and progress as we carry out development. And the slides in front of you tonight, and I think the city administrator has control of these, and so I'll speak to the ones that are that are on the page. The slides in front of you tonight are really just intended to give you a sense for where we plan to start the project. And then also, there's some photos of a number of different homes that are representative of what of what we would bring. And so if you go, Cynthia, back to the first slide that has sort of the blue coloring on it, the map. The project is going to start just south of 287, on really both sides of FM 3433. There'll be a primary entrance near the ground storage tank that will go to the east and will be the entrance over the long term to the to the bulk of the of the project. We'll have a number of different home builders in there. You can see better on another version of this concept plan that we'll we'll get to, that there are, there's a tremendous amount of open space. There's about a 20-acre existing constant level lake there. That's a, just a tremendous resource, something that we're set on protecting and opening up to to the community and to the public and giving folks plenty of options to get outside and play and enjoy some of the unique attributes of the of the property. And then on the west side, we'll, at the same time, for for different builders, start a project going to the west. And really, what's allowed us to, we start two different projects at the same time is from this demand from large builders that we've worked with for years that appreciate and are fully prepared to take action to to sort of capitalize on what all this this property, this project, and the City of Rome have to offer. And so I'm personally very encouraged to hear all the discussion on on investing in in a downtown district and attracting commercial users, which we'll be doing the same things in the Rolling V project. And and so I I personally envision this and 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 look forward to to working with you all to come to the same thought, but just envision this as a real partnership between our company and and the City of Rome. And then, you know, eventually, as we work our way south, it'll be the City of Newark as well, just to develop a great project for the region. There's, there's a ton of interest. And as we bring a number of rooftops into the project, there are going to be some some very significant commercial opportunities that that follow. And so, you know, I think that's the the bulk of the overview that I want to give tonight. I can I can point you all to, and there's a map at the end of the slides that I sent Cynthia, and can point you all to a couple of different communities that are around the the west side of the Metroplex that I think are are good examples in different ways for you all to 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 look at as you try to envision what we plan to build in Rome. The the most established of these projects is called Veridian in Arlington. It was developed by a group called Huffines Communities and is now owned by Johnson Development. But it has a, an array of product types. It's a perennial top seller in the Metroplex. Very well-done community with quite a bit of open space. A newer project that is on the north side, off of 35W, is Pecan Square. It's developed by Hillwood Communities. It's also a newer project, but already one of the top-selling master plan communities in DFW. They offer an array of lot sizes, home sizes, and have done a really a wonderful job of launching the project. And and they're selling somewhere around 400 homes a year in that community currently. And then another sort of highly-publicized project and somewhat controversial, depending on who you talk to, but a but a comparable project is Walsh Ranch on the west side of town, just north of where I-20 and I-30 come together. And Walsh, again, has a number of home builders and a variety of lot sizes and product types. And is really trying to, you know, all of these projects, including ours, are really trying to create an offering that will that will be attractive to the multitude of folks that that live in North Texas today, not to mention all the folks that are moving into North Texas every day. And so, you know, we we build this to create community and to provide amenities to folks that that they may not be able to find outside of a master plan context. And and some of you have had the opportunity, you either live next door to the Rolling V property or or have had the opportunity to come out on site. The rest of you, I look forward to showing you around on site. You'll find that it's a, it's a beautiful property. It's got some, some really unique attributes, largely just the the quality and the quantity of of surface water, of constant level lakes all across the property. And I'm a father of four young kids and can't help when I'm out there. But think about just what a playground it will be for for kids, for generations, to explore, be outdoors, and and be able to grow up. It's a really, it's a special place, and we're excited to launch development. And so with that, I can go back to Cynthia or the mayor and open up to any questions you have.
Sure. Thank you, Peter. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Eason, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Pincus, thank you very much for your presentation. Can you give me the range of lot sizes? Minimum and maximum at least?
Sure. So so Councilman Eastman, I think what we're, what we're, the the primary lot sizes as we launch will be, and as you, as you all see, preliminary plots will likely be 50-foot wide and 60-foot wide lots. In addition to those, and as you look at communities across North Texas, the the profile of builders that we're working with typically builds in, 50 and 60-foot wide lots are the are the meat of of the market. That's what buyers have really tended to desire. In addition to that, in the early phases, we're talking about offering a handful, a smaller number, but a handful of 70-foot wide lots. And then, and then a handful of smaller lots that are 40 feet wide and 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 thought of as more of a patio home type or a lock-and-leave type product. And 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 the goal there is to to start with with what the market and our view really wants and what the builders, our customers, really see demand for amongst their builders. The neat thing about the project over time and these larger projects is that we'll be able to offer lot sizes across the board, from large lots to smaller lots and density in certain areas and and less density and others. But that's what we're planning to launch with.
Councilmember Eason, you have another question?
Well, I guess I wasn't clear on my question. I wasn't asking how large the front width was. I was looking in terms of acreage. Are you talking about a tenth of an acre, quarter acre, third of an acre, half an acre, 16 acres? I'd like to know what the size of the acreage of these lots are.
Sure. So so these lots are are better described, I think, in in sort of thousands of square feet versus acreage. You know, I think the smallest lots that we'll offer will be somewhere thereabouts, 5,000 square feet. And they'll be up to, I would think, around a third of an acre in the in their, in this initial couple deliveries, with the majority of those being, you know, I would say sort of 7,000 to 10,000 square feet.
So the one you're looking at, it's a third of an acre?
Well, so if you, Cynthia, that the 60-foot wide lot is is a little over a quarter of an acre. That lot there, the 70-foot wide lot that has a three-car garage, if you scroll down one more, that's that's on about a third of an acre.
Thank you.
You bet.
And so just as a reminder, I want to chime in too, that that we have, the City of Rome has already signed a developers' agreement with PMB that kind of delineates all of the different options that in regard to, you know, lot size and things like that. So we already have that in place. Is there anything else, Peter, that you wanted to add for our council, kind of the high level? Like you said, this is, this is some of the first phases. So over time, I would imagine that other phases, as they develop, they would be market-driven and still within the parameters of any, you know, requirements or developers' agreements, correct?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. And I I just think that a focus of mine and and what I hope will become a focus of your all's is that the launch of the project, of any project of this size, it's critically important to generate really positive momentum. COVID has been an interesting experience for all of us, both personally and professionally. I'm sure you all have read some about the impact that it's had on single-family home demand across the country and specifically in North Texas. We've seen a flood of new demand from what had been urban renters, in a lot of cases, or suburban renters towards towards buying single-family homes in in master plan communities. And so the the market, even amidst a tremendous amount of uncertainty, is very strong for single-family development right now. And and it's important to us that we launch and get a get a lot of really good, strong momentum. Because if if we can show that there's, that there's buyer demand and that we're offering the market what it wants in terms of product and price point, then this project will move quicker than I think any of us can imagine and will lead to a ton of ancillary benefits in terms of commercial demand and 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 opportunities to cover city services and different things like that 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 I think will really benefit Rome overall and not just, you know, the Rolling V project in particular.
Thank you. Any questions, Councilmember Crenshaw? Yes, sir, I see you again.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I sent Cynthia an email. She could send me a copy of that slide with the overall plat of the of the development. I work here at Agas, which is surrounded by the development, right here off 287. We do refrigerant gases. I didn't know if the developer was going to reach out to us here because we're going to have an impact. People might have concerns about having homes near a gas plant which there's none, because we, everything we do is non-flammable. It's not, it's just refrigerant gas. But I didn't know if you had plans to reach out to our operations manager here or I know they would like to see this so that they can plan to be good neighbors.
Well, we, Councilman, thank you for bringing it up, and we certainly will. You know, we have, we've made an effort, and we haven't connected with you all yet, but we've made an effort in particular to to reach out to neighbors in the area sort of that's highlighted in blue here, right where we're looking at starting. And then, you know, as the project gets further along, you know, we absolutely will, will be communicating with everybody around us. And 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 it's critical to us that we be a good neighbor as well and address any concerns that folks have. So I haven't spoken to your point manager yet, but certainly happy to anytime. And it'll be on my list as we work our way to the east. I will say, you can see in the middle of the blue, and you all drive up and down 3433 regularly, I'm sure, where the where the ground storage tank is there is driving a lot of, just because that's where water is available. That's driving a lot of where we start. And so I would anticipate that we'll develop out this area highlighted in blue first, and then we'll sort of build off of that. It will be a good while before we work our way over to the 287 frontage because there'll have to be quite a bit more water infrastructure built to allow that to happen.
I could, I would like this slide to show, that way they'll know. I can show them, hey, it's going to be a while. But if you need a name, you probably, his name is Chris Orvett. He is our, he is our operations manager. He manages all of the operations for Agas in the Americas.
Great.
And if you need a number, it's just 817-636-2089. And it's, and you can get into the company.
That's great. Thank you very much.
You bet.
And in case anybody's wondering, this map is the conceptual map that's in the exhibits of the current developers' agreement. So this has been around for for a while since that document was signed. The only thing worth seeing different is just the highlighted area that they're looking to start with first.
Well, and one, one, yeah, and one, one other thing that's been added is if you go to the, there's a parcel in the middle of the property that used to be slightly wider. We ended up acquiring in February of this year about 200 acres right there where the marker is and and just included that so that it's clear, you know, that it's part of what we have now.
Okay, thank you. All right. So any other questions? Councilmember McCosky? I don't think we hear you. I think you're still muted.
I'm sorry. What's the price point going to be on the houses that are going to be backing up against Ellis Home Station?
Councilman McCosky, I'm, I'm, I'm going to give you my best guess. That, you know, the builders, we sell lots effectively wholesale to the builders. The builders ultimately build and sell the homes. But but I would guess that we're, the the sort of lowest available price in the community is going to be somewhere in the high 200s on smaller lot products, smaller home product. And I think it will go up. There'll be homes in these first several phases that will be $600,000 or $700,000. And so it'll be a good broad range. I can't speak to exactly which house and which location yet. And again, it's sort of my my best guess. The builders ultimately set the prices.
All right. Any other comments, questions from council members? Want to make sure I give everybody a chance while Peter's on the line. Okay. Okay, if there's not any questions for Peter on some of the high-level stuff, we wanted to give him an opportunity to share some of this with everyone, answer some questions, give you a little more information. And then, too, as they've been working on their plans, they they do have some proposed amendments that they've given the city to consider, to address several items. So staff is working on evaluating those to bring back to council. Once we have vetted those with our staff, engineers, legal, and that, we'll bring those back to you for consideration. You know, one example would be, Peter mentioned patio homes and... and those are similar to some of the small cottage homes. We've seen some pictures in some of the Park Steering Committee and Master Plan meetings. Cottage homes are a little bit smaller, fit a certain need. They're kind of a niche market. And that's one of the requests in the amendments is to allow for that because there is a market for that. So we wanted to prepare you that you were going to get some. You're just not going to get them all in detail tonight until the staff have vetted that so we can get the project moving even further down the path to phase one and two, I guess, if it's on both sides of the road.
That's right. And Mayor, I would just add, you know, the requests, when you all see them, are, you know, this was an agreement that was originally drafted in 2007 and 2008 by the prior landowner who was not a developer. And then as we stepped in and are ready to actually put the plan into action, there were some minor cleanup items in our view that make the, that, you know, the mayor referenced patio homes, which I think are technically allowed under the agreement, but there's some clarifications that we wanted to make that really, again, sort of go to making this as marketable as possible to the home builders and the ultimate home buyers based on demand across North Texas. So I don't think there's anything in there that's new, but some cleanup items that sort of prepare it to be put into action would be my description.
Sure, sure. And when we signed that last, the end of last summer, we did not have time in our discussions to get everything vetted out maybe the way that we wanted to as far as some of the details. So that's why there's been the discussion come up again now that, you know, the plan is actually coming together. You know, it's time to look at these items that they're proposing. So we will bring that back to you at the next meeting for discussion and possible action from you as a council. All right. So are you good with that for now? Everybody good? I know the meeting's running a little bit long, but want to make sure we give everybody a lot of information tonight. So with that being said, we'll go on to our last agenda item and it dovetails on the discussion we've just had. Agenda item P, discussion and any necessary action regarding authorization to negotiate potential exchange of extraterritorial jurisdiction, ETJ, with the city of Aurora. City administrator, would you put that conceptual map back up just kind of as a reference for council to see? So the Rolling B in its entirety right now is in Rome ETJ, Newark ETJ, Aurora ETJ, and Fort Worth ETJ. So as a developer, that's four different entities to work with. So we posed the question based on information that we received from the developer. If you'll look, and Cynthia, if you can point to, there's 122 acres that's in the grayed out area and that's in the ETJ of Aurora. We do have agreements with the city of Aurora to provide water service to that ETJ. So these agreements were put in place many years ago before me as mayor to provide that water. So we had discussions, initial discussion with the city of Aurora and we would like your blessing to negotiate with the city of Aurora to a potential ETJ swap, whereas the city of Rome would have that 122 acres in our ETJ instead of the Aurora ETJ. But in exchange for that, we would identify the rough equivalent of 122 acres equivalent for Aurora, for Rome, to give that over to Aurora in exchange. Because there's ETJ that we have that's not near water lines. It's things that may not develop out for many, many years to come. So since this is something we are already providing services for, for it to be split in the billing for maybe there's a subdivision there and it's half in Aurora and half in ETJ of Rome. There's a few subdivisions that are in this area. The Chisholm Springs subdivision is split in their utilities for water and sewer and that creates a little confusion. Shell Craig, if any of you are familiar with that on 114 out by the Denton County line, that's actually half in Denton County and half in Wise County. The services are split out there. It does create some confusion and so we would like to clean up the ETJ lines by being able to negotiate out something and bring that proposal back to you at a later meeting. Councilmember Easton?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize you to do that.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this something that would be discussed or bring in P and Z as well? As part of this discussion?
I'm going to defer to the city attorney. It may very well be, it's an ETJ swap in essence, but I don't know the legal.
No, there's no requirement for to go back to P and Z. It would come back to council.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that, Councilmember. Okay, that's a good point. Any other comments, questions?
I'll second his motion then.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember McCabe. All right. So we have a motion in a second. Let's go down the roll for a vote. We have Councilmember McCabe.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
And then Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We will bring back a proposal at a later meeting for you to consider. We are done with our agenda items. We are to future agenda items. If you have anything tonight, feel free to speak up. Mayor Pro Tim?
Two agenda items I want, would ask us to put on there. Let me find my little list here. I would like for us to come up with an alternative funding committee and come up with a plan on how that committee would work. Not only for what we talked about tonight, which is option A, but also all of our other departments. It should be looking at alternative funding to help with their major projects as well. And so there needs to be some communication between the chairmans or the directors of each one of those categories. And we need to have a plan on how we're going to investigate, apply, and execute.
Okay, got it.
And then, and then the other item is what I mentioned to you as far as my caveat. I'd like to see us establish some sort of facility committee to, just like we've done with all the other departments, assess and come up with long range planning for the facilities that Rome has so that they no longer fall in disrepair and stay in disrepair.
Okay, got it. All right. Any other future agenda items tonight? Okay. If not, if you have one, email the city secretary or city administrator and we'll get that on the list. If not, do I have a motion to adjourn? Councilmember McCabe, I see that hand. We have a second from Councilmember Easton, all in favor. I'll go down the roll. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
And then Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at 9:10 PM. Have a lovely evening. See you next time.
Bye bye, everybody.
Bye.